...to the flag, the United States of America, to declare our borders and our states. Under our, in this world, the great Jesus. Called the regular order and.
Good evening.
Yours right now?
Is it all right?
Yep.
Unless the students want to stay in here.
You guys want to stay all night or you just want to present?
No.
Safe for that, no. Tonight I have the privilege of introducing and sharing with you all the nuances of Appalachian Elementary School. Tonight we have with us our AES Spirit Club, which is part of our enrichment program, is one of the after-school programs. And it's led by Ms. Andrews, Mrs. Hodges, and this is Taylor. So before I take it away, you guys come on up, how's what you put your students.
Hello, members of the school board. We're here today to tell you all about our amazing school spirit club and the exciting things we do throughout the year. First of all, what do you think we do every week? But we remind all the students to attend to it. Every Friday, just so everyone knows, we start this off in schools real like nothing else. It's so fun to see all students. So I'm glad about it. We also encourage on creating posters for the hallway to help spread the message of school spirit. These posters are full of energy, fun designs, and inspirational messages that encourage everyone to get involved and to be proud of where we go to school. The posters remind students about staircases and upcoming events and just to look great all the things that make our school great. Our club is all about going to school better and making a place where everyone feels excited and happy. We thank you for supporting our public health and social service. How is it that we really just don't give credit where it's due? We wanted to take a minute to say thanks to all the members of the school board for giving us the opportunity to be part of this club. Showing our appreciation for this club, we have considered, um, more spirit as much as, so I'll give it a knock.
All different grades or all same?
Uh, split.
Four? Very nice. Should we speak these?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I like your shirts too. Yes.
You guys don't have to stay if you want to go grab a cookie. This would be a good time to go. I know there was a lot of talk in the community and there was a lot of opinions, but this building has not had a difficult time transferring mascot. There's a lot of pride here, the kids have embraced it. Um, the mornings before we do our announcements, we play a Riverhawks screaming sound. It lets everybody know it's time for announcements. Years ago I had pink eyes, so instead of doing fist bumps and handshakes, now we do the Riverhawks salute or we do buzz out or talents up. So that's where that evolved from. Next slide please. Next slide please. Uh, before I go any further, I really want to say publicly, she would not allow me to speak at our last end of the year faculty meeting or at her retirement party. But I would like to give a public appreciation to Tammy Orzal, who served our district for thirty-five, thirty-one years. Um, she has been the face of this building for several decades. She has created a welcome environment. Her enthusiasm and her caring is contagious and she is a huge part of the culture that you see here in this building. She shares a lot of that responsibility. So I just want to take a second to publicly, because she wouldn't let me when she was here, publicly say thank you to her service, Mrs. Orzal. Uh, we did get together in our building, we've created our own mission and vision statement, I'll spare you from reading it, but you'll see that it's really about putting kids first. And I hope everything that I can share with you tonight is about kids and relationships and making sure that people are included and creating a positive environment. So next slide please. Just a little bit of the information from this building. Uh, we have eighteen teachers in this building from K to five. We have just under four hundred students. Uh, we have three DCT, direct consultant teachers, especially we have three special education teachers that service our students, uh, K to five. We have one and a half teacher assistants, um, one that we share with the other building and one that we have full-time. The student tutor program, we have eight students from the high school who come here every morning. I would just like to say thank you for that program. Uh, it's been very successful, those students really, I think the high school kids get as much out of it as the elementary kids. They come in, uh, they, we talk to them about what it's like to be professional on time and this is a real job. Being a former coach, I always believed that how you start practice is how the practice will go. I think that how you start the day, um, you come and you're ready. Uh, these kids come in, we get them fed, we get them undressed, we get them, get their wiggles out. Uh, we get them ready for the conditions for the rest of the day. And those student tutors are a huge resource that we have capitalized on. So thank you for allowing us to have that. Uh, wait, sorry.
Sorry.
We have two hundred and seventeen, I think it might have grown up to about two hundred and twenty now today since I've made this slide. Well over half of our school population takes part in our after-school program. I think that the district deserves a lot of credit for this program. This is a free program for working-class families. As a guy who paid childcare for his own kids, this is good for families. It's well-run, I have to give a, um, public shout-out to Ms. Bango, who is the director of that here in this building. She has a orderly, she has a lot of plans, it's structured, um, and the kids enjoy it. So the after-school program is a great resource. Two pre-K classes, uh, we have, right now we have three teachers at each grade level. Uh, as you can see, the median sizes of the classes are this column on the right, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty-three, nineteen, seventeen, and twenty. Those are the median class sizes in this building. And, you know, that's, that's pretty much the foundation of this building. And that's the volts. Um, I said some of this stuff in our tour, but I did want to talk a little bit about the district and I want to thank the board, I also want to thank the district for. We, um, we have a mission here and one of the things you saw last week is the great work that they're doing at the secondary level. Well, we're the foundation of that. We, we recognize very much that we're preparing them for what you saw last week, to acquire those skills and be ready to go and access those opportunities. So we do outsource, uh, some other, um, programs and the district helps us with that. And we, we go on an abundance of field trips with people, which give kids extra opportunities outside the classroom. Uh, we have the Ag in the Classroom program that comes here from Cornell. We have our Student Success and Wellness Program that comes in from OSCEs. Uh, and we also participate with the Lockheed Martin Engineers in the Classroom Program. So these are things that we're bringing in additional to the day-to-day, um, the day-to-day curriculum. We believe that we're trying to provide a lot of experience and exposure for children. Um, our, our job is to give them real-world opportunities. I know you saw a presentation at the last board meeting with the secondary level. Our goal at the elementary level is to help kids understand what their interests are and what they're good at. When they transfer to the middle school, they'll start exploring who am I? And then they'll start making some career choices as you already learned, but we're here to try to get them to, what am I? To touch on our Student Success and Wellness Program. As you saw that room where the kids do a lot of physical things, working together. Not so much just reading, writing, and arithmetic, but you have to be able to apply that, right? We live in a technological world, um, that does a lot for people. And, um, one of the things with AI and all the technology, we talk about these things, um, it cannot replace human connections. And we cannot be short-sighted on that. And we, uh, if kids are going to be successful, or anybody's going to be successful in the world of technology, we have to make sure that they're able to connect with others. Things like critical thinking and problem-solving and listening and respect, um, in the career world, we call those soft skills. So we're consciously addressing that at the elementary level. I think everybody at the last board meeting had an opportunity to see some amazing musicians. I think this weekend you had an opportunity to see some very talented musicians and people with a lot of skills. Well, um, an amazing, amazing music program starts somewhere. I want to let you know that we have ninety, ninety students in our band. We have a concert band, we have a jazz band, our students go to NISMU, just like they do at the secondary level. And our fifth grade, our fifth graders, as I told you before, all participate in a rock band. Our chorus has eighty-five students in it. Um, they do all county, they do special performances, just like, uh, the secondary level. And again, we do the unique Battle of the Bands and the Third Grade Musical here. So that every kid in elementary school gets a real healthy, um, exposure to a lot of different types of music and a musical interest. I gotta give a shout-out to our PTO. Um, our PTO is exceptional, they are incredibly, um, dedicated. I know that one of the district goals is to have better community relations and more involvement between school and the community. As you see the monthly events calendar, uh, I've worked really closely with our parent-teacher organization. We have a minimum of one, but as you can see, it's way more than one. There are multiple instances in which parents and students have an opportunity to access something in the school and be connected during a, so. That is, that is what our PTO does and I would like to thank them. Kind of want to take just a second to say, well, I'm going to show you some data and say that this is a highly functioning school, but I also want to say we have fun doing it. Things that contribute to our success. Feel like I'm talking like a coach, but we try to keep the playbook here pretty simple. We follow the PLC process, we're dedicated to it, we keep it simple and we, we do it. So, um, our grade-level PLC teams, they meet every Tuesday and Thursday religiously. I said, and I showed you today where you could walk in any given day at the end of the day, and you will see teachers in a huddle, looking at student data, talking about students, and figuring out how they're going to teach them in a more effective way. Uh, we've also made great strides in this building with, like I talked about, making sure that it's not a competition, putting your ego to the side and sharing students. So during our goal time, um, which is where we do our tier-two interventions, you will see grade levels where students, you're good in math and I'm really great at teaching writing, so we're going to take these five kids and send them to your room, and these kids are going to come over to my room. And we are getting much better at that. And the concept of, not just your kids, they're our kids, and we're sharing resources. And the last thing I want to touch on is our instructional coaching model. Firmly believe that it's a lot better to do things right the first time than it is to try to fix it after it wasn't done right the first time. We have two instructional coaches in this building who are phenomenal. They work out, uh, they collaborate with the coaches in the district. Um, they are able to go into the classrooms, help teachers set their own goals, help teachers, um, uh, figure out, you know, certain things that they want to work on. The nice thing about the instructional coaching, um, it's, it's one thing if an administrator has a conversation and offers suggestions to a teacher, but it's not always safe, it's not always, it's not always pure. The instructional coaches are able to go in there and really have deep conversations that there, there's no, um, it's just, it's different than having an administrator do it. So I'm very, a very big proponent of our instructional coaching model. Attendance, everybody knows that, uh, you gotta get kids to come to school, right? So we've, as, we have a district that made a lot of attempts to try to improve our attendance. As you see, in the past three years, this building runs pretty, pretty steady. And that's with cold and flu and all sorts of illnesses that are happening this year, those are very good numbers. And, um, there's a, there's a real reason for that. Like, we, we've used some of the new technology out there where we're tracking students, our child study team meets and we look at attendance records. We're using, um, we use everyday labs to produce our, our reports. I call parents, um, teachers reach out to parents, we let them know that if you're, if you have a little one and you're not bringing them to school, then you're giving them a real disservice, particularly at this age when you miss a little, you miss a lot. So, um, I put down this deep thought by me, uh, we believe that, sorry. We really believe that if you want to improve attendance, um, you create a place where kids want to be. So, and I, I know that there's a lot of things to compete against in the world and, um, if you make this a place that they want to be, you'll see data like that. We were told to put together a committee and we, we looked at the survey that was done by the board a while back. We, we got together, myself and the committee, there were a handful of people on it, we analyzed that data, um, we looked at it very closely. What I have here is what we thought as a committee, a building, was the most profound thing that the data showed us. There is a disconnect between what teachers think and maybe what parents and students think. And this is not uncommon in the world, right? Perception is everything. So sometimes, we have ninety-eight percent of our staff members who believe that they, they genuinely care about children. But we only have seventy-three percent of the students district live who believe that teachers care about students. As a principle, I would love to believe that the ninety-eight is the correct number, but the reality is for other people, it's only seventy-three percent. So reality is, is theirs. So the one thing we took away from this information, from this part of the survey and this data district live is the work that Ms. Castorline is leading and the work that we're doing as a district, the coming up with a, a mission and vision statement, making sure that we have collective commitments, making sure that we as a district, as a staff, as a board, as a leadership team, that we're approaching things consistently and predictably, we hope will close that gap. So that's how we introduce this to our, to our staff with some of the work that they're doing, when they do collective commitments, mission. Why are we doing this? Like, we're doing this because we need to close that gap. Next please. Stay test data, it's, it's very easy for, I, I constantly stand in front of my staff and say, it's, it's not always about the test. We are raising the person, the whole person, right? Um, you are not a four, you are not a three, and we are much, we are much more, we are much more than that. And it's very important that we stay focused on that. However, test scores are real, data is real, student performance and academic achievement is measured, so we, we take that seriously too. Um, in this building, we have out of five state assessments that are given in grades three through five, out of seven assessments, five of them, we are anywhere between twenty-two and twenty-six points ahead of the state average. Okay? The only place where we didn't go above the state average, we had two teachers from around the fraternity last year. So if you look at the data, you'll see the left-hand column, Appalachian here, state here. Appalachian here, state here. Next please. Math, Appalachian here, state, Appalachian, state. Science, which often gets neglected, it's often the, the one that doesn't always get addressed very often. Give Mr. Ferraro some props because he's a teacher that comes in here and he works with our students as a full-time science teacher. As you see, we are thriving, we are doing much higher than the state level. So it's not just about test scores, but if it was, we're doing pretty good. Next please. And in summary, um, when you talk about what's our why, I hope, I hope you'll get a sense of, it's really about the relationships and the people. It's about the kids and it is a special place, so that's AES. Questions? Thank you.
You mentioned about the instructional coaches. Do you like the average, I don't know, your experience?
They have.
Because you, I know there's a difference between the administrator and teacher and then there's, you know, isn't, you have folks coming from different years of service. So is it, are you taking folks that are established teachers and making them coaches?
Yes. So I would say that the two people we have on staff, and I don't know how many years they've been, they've been teachers, I would say it's probably at least a decade, maybe more. When they were in the classroom, they were highly effective. They have particular niches. I would say one's really, really strong in math and one's really, really strong in literacy. They do instructional coaching with teachers. They also, half of their day, do interventions with kids, like the tier-three interventions that need help. So they are really like part-time coaches, part-time interventionists. And then we use our TA full-time to do the tier-three intervention. So we have, we're hitting that in a lot of different ways. I don't know the exact, the exact number, but.
Sometimes that's hard to do, like, you know, when you have established teachers, like, you bring in somebody and do them, be like, you know, they, they don't have the experience that someone has. Why should we be listening to them? It's, it's sometimes difficult to get around that.
It, it is, and we had to market it really strategically, like, you can't just say, you need to go in there and tell her how to be a better teacher. So, um, again, non-threatening, teacher-led, goal-oriented, specific focus, pre-data, uh, post-data. When teachers see a result that's meaningful, they're willing to participate in it. They don't want to check boxes, they want to do, so as we celebrate those successes, people look and they're like, hey, I want some of that. Thank you.
You go one point two, adoption of the agenda, in a motion. Discussion, I'd like to, I'd like to add ten point two if I can. Just bump up, we have a discussion about audit and it looks like it made it into twelve. I'd just like to do it right at the end of ten, that's okay. We can focus on that, on discussion separately. I'll probably forget by the time we get there, so someone will remind me.
Linda, Jessica?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Approval of the minutes, January thirteenth. Approval of the minutes, January thirteenth, need a motion? Discussion?
Gene? Linda? Jessica?
Aye.
Mike? Joe?
Approval of three point two minutes from January twenty-seventh. But I think it's, if you're not here, you have to stand, right? You have approval if you're not here. So need a motion?
Gene? Linda? Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Personnel items, fraction, four point one, personnel consign agenda. Four point one through, need a motion? Discussion, any discussion, please?
Gene? Linda? Jessica?
Aye.
Mike? Joe? Joe?
Okay. Finance items for action? Motion? Discussion?
You're doing all five? I'm just on the building rates. When are those, are those done, charred, I was like, charred or collected as far as, is it after the year being, like, before they're allowed to come in or how is that?
Those are foster here and, and helping out there for other districts that we're building.
Okay. Not coming, just coming into the house square?
Gene? Linda? Jessica?
Aye.
Mike? Joe? Joe?
Six point one, CPSC, CSC, five oh four recommendations, recommended that the, recommendations of CPSC, CSC, five oh four are hereby approved, the motion? Discussion?
Gene? Linda? Jessica? Mike? Joe? Joe?
President's report, I did not have anything currently, so we'll go to a board committee report.
You'll see the first read of the policies, button thirty deals with how we deal with media. And I think it adds language in there to address social media in particular. The media board meetings, again, it's a recommended policy and gives the procedures by which we should handle that. Basically, the president and the superintendent of the board session, we address all the concerns. And then the last one gives direction, it's a local policy, it's recommended regarding public complaints. Gives notice to all public complaints.
Ahead, just a question from a member of the committee. These are all along with them, these are all existing?
One, I think, is existing.
They're all, like, the ones that we look at every time. I think there's an existing policy.
As far as the policies that we're addressing first, that's what I had either made recommendations to add them or change them.
So they, they all exist, we just have to keep them updated.
So we had volume two of our, our district newsletter that went out this week, which I thought was very well done. I moved that away, since I give them credit for putting all the information together and obviously our, our building leaders as well for, for sharing things that are happening in their buildings. We had a really, really busy weekend on campus and I think many of you probably, I think all of you were here at some point or another with the show that was going on at the high school. We had three, three different shows starting on Friday night. They were supposed to do on Saturday night, but because of weather, we pushed it up to two o'clock, midnight, I guess you would say. And then on Sunday, we had the third show. You know, you think about the amount of time that the kids and the adults and staff put into putting something like that together and it's pretty, pretty incredible that the, what they, you know, the outcome of, of their, their performance, the, you know, the fatigue that after three straight days of doing that and showing up at five o'clock in the morning and not leaving until all hours of the night. You know, it just takes a, takes a lot of effort on everybody's part because they're people that are building sets. They just, year after year, they just do an incredible job, you know, with this program and we're just super proud of what they do. So congrats to all those folks that were a part of that and, you know, I believe attendance was pretty good, really was across the board. I think we normally, normally sell out, Saturday was a little later because we had the change in time, but all in all, there, you know, there was a tremendous amount of people that attended. So thank you to the community for their support as well. Also, at the same day, we had an agricultural competition going on over at OES and we had districts from all over the state that were participating. It was a really pretty big event. I had a chance to kind of walk through and kids were presenting their projects in, in different rooms at, at different times. So it's always neat to watch them head off on the side, preparing to get ready to, to do their presentation and their practicing and their rehearsing. And if you've seen our own students, ex students present, they are incredibly, with enough knowledge that they're able to retain and then, then share out without even looking at any notes most of the time, so it's, it's quite impressive. We have, our drone soccer group, as you guys, as the board saw here at our last meeting at the high school, they actually won regionals. So they were first place in regionals and they will now go to a state tournament here in March. So they are doing quite well. That was a pretty, a pretty good battle. We saw some of the videos or pictures from it, but I think they're having a blast and they're doing a great job, so we're really excited for them. And March fifth, we have Dr. Farrell and I will be meeting with the IDA to talk again about the pilot, the central New York oil and gas pilot and just kind of work, continue to work with them and come up with some potential solutions for that situation. And we hope to be able to report something substantial to you shortly after that.
Is it, I forget where it was left off in, in the pilot, was it that we were hoping to stay on or was it left without or were we?
They wanted some scenarios of how it might be able to spread out over time. But with the size of that pilot, it's almost impossible to do that. So we're gonna go back and share that with them and give them a sense of what those scenarios would even look like and how they were even worded. And there's another whole problem with the law and the way these things work. So when you get lawyers to start to talk about it, they're like, well, you can't exactly do it that way based on how the laws work. So we're gonna have a discussion about that and it's probably gonna be pushed towards going back to staying as a pilot. That would be the recommendation, unless you direct me otherwise.
No, I, I mean, I'm curious as, as if, I mean, this is a kind of field that's completely thing and I don't know if there's a drop dead date on it as well.
The only thing we got, we got, the reason why we're doing this now is this doesn't really affect next year. It affects the following year, which is twenty-six, twenty-seven's budget. So getting out from it now matters. Mike, I suspect what they're gonna say back is that we need to reach out to central New York oil and gas, which means we're probably talking with their legal counsel and our legal counsel and, yeah, EA's legal counsel and having a conversation about whether they're even gonna entertain it, because technically they could say no. And then that's another whole thing, so.
Then I think we've talked about if that's the case, the sooner you get that messaging out, the better.
That's correct, that's correct. So we thought we'd at least see if they're gonna even go down this road. Gotta start there, I think, and then we'll bring that back to you. And then I think at that point, a lot of discussion in the board will decide where to go from there. Is that fair? That work?
One of the challenges we had five years ago when we did this was just, it took some time with central New York oil and gas attorneys because they don't really understand how New York tax law works and how the corporate tax gap works.
They're from Texas.
Quite confusing, they're based out of Texas, so they, they kind of, you know, it took them a while to digest what we were trying to explain and how it impacts us and the community. Over time, they, you know, they did, they did get it, but we don't know if we're gonna be dealing with the same folks here. If we've got new, you know, new attorneys that'll be representing on the table, we're not sure. But I know Joe Mayer with attorney for the IDA, he's been very helpful in facilitating those conversations, so.
Cory, about it, we tried, I mean, I know if I reached right, as far as amortizing it over multiple years, that's not looking like a possibility?
Well, we could present that to them, so, you know, ten years and a $300,000 a year. The problem is, is the, the way the law is written and the way the attorneys talked about it is that there's no real mechanism in the law to allow you to return partial pieces to the rolls, if that makes sense. So that's the problem with the stepped approach. So I'm not sure what that will even mean, if we could even go out, because we just ran into this with best buy, right? Because we did that over a two-year period. And what ended up happening is it was supposed to be a fifty-fifty, but it ended up being a sixty-forty and then you had all this other taxes involved. And it's, it gets complicated. So we could present that, but it's not a clean, it's not as clean as it sound, or it sounds like just by doing it by ten years and breaking it out that way. Twenty, I don't even think they'll entertain that. So we're gonna see if they'll even have the conversation with those persons.
First, they're concerned keeping them on the pilot doesn't, unless there's some, I can't imagine any difference as far as tax filings go. They're still paying the taxes, the same amount.
I think it advantages them.
It's the same amount whether they go on levy or whether they state what they are.
True, but I, I don't know that, I don't know about the raise, I don't know because they're not on the levy. So I don't know if the levy raise is gonna affect them, so I don't know if it's advantageous for them to stay on that pilot.
That's true. Have we ever considered proposing special legislation as it pertains to the Oego district alone? To have someone go forward with that and, because I mean, they do that for businesses that have special services.
We did that with the health insurance reserve and we were successful, so that's one option. We could talk to the senator's office and.
I don't think about it, because if, if the, the potential impact to the district, it seemed to me that that would help make the case.
I agree.
And you see it all the time with the legislation, where individual district, special legislation aimed at a single district or in, as it pertains to a single district, they're there every year. It's worth a try.
What do you think, Joe?
Anything that helps would be a good option.
Because I think.
For that far out, my, my only concern is I don't wanna end up a year and a half from now with a short window to sell and to describe and explain to the taxpayers how this might impact them. That's my only concern. I don't wanna get involved in things that I know I'm not a hundred percent sure of how it could go. I'm just thinking about the window of time that we need if they say we don't want to do pilot. And then how do we present that and how do we explain to the taxpayers how that might impact them? Otherwise, I think that just sounds like a great idea from Gene, I don't have any experience with that. But anything you guys do that could help us, I think that would be fantastic. I just, I'm just concerned about the window, that's all.
Yeah, I think we're definitely timing-wise at a good spot, we're okay there. So if you're agreeable, we'll take step one with the IDA and then maybe a conversation with central New York oil and gas. Because they may say, no dice, that's a whole other ballgame. Now, now we have to really think about what we're gonna do. So we can start there and then I think with Gene's idea, maybe Cory and I can then reach out to Assembly and Senators and start that process. That would probably be a meeting that will probably require us to be there and talk with them, so. All right.
Okay, District Business, ten point one, R and B for construction management. Need a motion? Second, second, okay, and then discussion? Any discussion? Bob, you were on the interview today, we don't have any discussion.
I have no discussion.
Okay, I thought that was, personally, I thought they were the clear favorite in the room as Bob's letter indicated. And the architects were happy with them and everything, so they were clearly the best in the room, so.
Oh, sorry. Gene? Linda? Jessica?
Aye.
Mike? Joe? Joe?
Okay, and then I did not forget, so we've had discussions about potential conflict of interest. We've had discussions about how to address those and I think one way to address that would be to have an audit. And that, what we talked about was bringing it from twelve, where it says discussion on Marathon Health, audit internal, external, was to look into previous building project in order to eliminate or identify any potential conflicts of interest. So in terms of looking at that, I would, I would like to open the floor for a discussion about that. I think most people are here, some likely had these discussions, some people were asked.
Just the conflict of interest portion on the, not, not specifically the Marathon Health?
No. So I think we have to make a motion to discuss that, about potential conflicts. So discussion, we, we, we talked about there being a competition of conflict, construction management and, I don't know, a lot of sites, two companies. And one way to address that would be to do an audit, looking backward and then looking forward to make sure that we put some structures in place. If anything was filed that might be, needed to be titled up, then we can put those in place moving forward while we're utilizing the same companies that were seemingly successful, feeling everybody was happy with that, to address directly.
You want a discussion, Joe?
Yes, yes.
Based on everything that I've read, you know, I missed some of this, but everything I've read, I can just, and I understand. But the vehicle that you have as a board, you've got several vehicles. All of dates back to the governor's five-point plan, with its effect back in two thousand and five. You have a host of auditing, that you've got your normal claims auditor, which that person is auditing everything you pay on a, on a real-time basis. When claims go through, this person is supposed to review them and, and report any, any announcements. The other vehicle, which is driven by the claims, or by the audit committee, which is the entire board. You can contact our internal auditor and point her where you want her to go, tell her a mis suggestion, we want you to audit this project or a whatever helps projects and for that goes. And what you get from that is any exceptions that may go out. And then your future, where you adjust the future is the current direction. Okay, so that's another vehicle. You can always bring in your independent auditors. That's another. Obviously, you've got auditors, so help won't happen. So you can call them in and have them aim at specific purpose. So there's another possibility to identify them. And then finally, you've got the control. So you've got the four, the control approach, but unless they know there's a problem, you're a beauty of that. Right, I agree. I agree. That's, you ever invite them, they're the. But I think the internal auditor is probably the, that's what she's, that's what she's in business for, is the way.
So my understanding too, just today, my understanding is that she's actually there to start the process.
And for the claims, for the.
She's not informed to start that and then getting the auditing. Prepare the process already. Just to share that, I'm not sure.
She's.
I was just getting aware of that.
I think, I can't remember. I don't know if we pointed her at, usually they ask for three target areas. So we've got most of them. So.
So, I mean, so the conflict of interest was, or is, appearances. That wasn't caught by any of those auditors, like you say, that appeared to be a conflict of interest to me, just on the surface. That the two companies, the construction management and the ad-site management, the two presidents or owners of the, were pretty high ranking of those two companies, possibly are married. So to me, that doesn't necessarily mean there's, it doesn't mean that anything wrong. But I did ask our internal auditor, I said, does that appear, something like that, that seems to be a conflict of interest? And she said that my audit is coming up, I could use that as a little microscope to look at it. So that's what she did. My concern is that she was not aware of that, and she wasn't asked that.
And he likes Smith, though, you know, Smith, you know.
No, no, it's not.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's not a judgment either.
No, no, I'm just saying, Smith, Smith, you know. So I'm not sure many people, unless you had, you know, somehow, I don't know how you would pick up on it. Unless it was like, you know, some really unusual, like Smith.
Right. And that's not a judgment. I'm just pointing it out.
Well, I just, and all I'm pointing out to you is you've got, I said, you can steer her. You can try to zero her in if that's what you need to do, the audit. Tell her exactly what you want her to do and have her vote in.
I guess. I guess part of the discussion, I would look at all the important things. Is that what we should do, or should we hire someone who has completely objective and outside and around, things that have already been going out? I think that's kind of my discussion. That's why I ask for discussion, other people's thoughts. My thought is that it seems, nobody was aware of it, which Mike Smith spent. But it does seem something that now that we do know about it, should we just make sure that there's nothing, there's no problems, because we're going to move forward, and we want to move forward with the companies that have treated us well and have done good work, and we don't want to change anything up. It seems like the architects are happy, it seems like the work is good, all those things seem in a good place. But I would feel more comfortable moving forward to make sure that we are certain of that. And I think this will be things like recent. That's why, that's why I want to have a discussion.
That can be like option three, take your independent auditor and aim them at, because I mean, by definition, I mean, they just do our annual audit, and they do at audits at capital projects. But not necessarily, they state right in their audits that they might not necessarily come find, determine there was. But you can hire them and again, aim them at a specific.
Well, yeah, certainly.
And they are independent, even other hours, we, you know, they just wanted it. And we have other auditors that, that's another option. It's very questionable. Your other.
How many issues do you see, what the cost differences are? Because I mean, to your point, Joe, as far as just making sure that everything's laying flat, so there aren't questions later, later on with anything. I don't know, it's maybe the costs of the things aren't it, but obviously there's the zero sum or option.
The internal auditor is opposed to some, whereas the independent auditor, you have to bring them in aside from their normal contract and pay them and they're right, and I don't know what that would be. It would be, it would be outside the realm of those. But another thought is, Corey, have you ever looked to see how many other schools have both firm? There's probably four, five, six. That's my opinion. I don't know, I understand what you're saying, but we haven't worked with these people in my whole career. I don't see anybody jeopardizing their businesses by trying to collude just because I'm, I'm, I might be there, because I don't know, I don't really answer that question.
I would say one of the things that might be helpful for the board to do is to have someone come in and present what co-op or purchasing is all about.
Yeah.
And what are all the checks and balances are placed as a government contract? But there's a lot to it.
There really is.
In terms of the checks and balances that happen, the approvals for pricing, you have to be in a range for them to be approved. You'll buy that co-op channel. The other piece too to think about is we are going to probably have to bid sooner than later. We're going to get on the work this summer. There's a current lawsuit going out right now. One of the local districts right now is being sued over using the co-op to bid. But that should shake out legally, but there might be, you know, there may be an appeal, some pending would be my guess. So it's probably going to get dragged out. So my recommendation beyond all this, you can audit where you want to audit, go right ahead. But I think that we, the place that we're in, the timing that we're in, going after just traditional bidding would be the smartest option for us.
I'm telling you what your vehicles are, I'm not telling you that that's where I think you ought to. In my opinion, I don't think it's any sure, just based on my own experience. I mean, I can't, obviously, I'm 100% certain, but I just can't believe that that is the issue.
Can we talk about the, you know, that, can I talk openly about the interview process?
My pleasure.
Well, I would say this in general, I would say in general, I think it was better to have a team, it was clear that having the same team who's familiar with the score, familiar with the buildings, not only through CM, but also onsite, really helpful. And those relationships that exist will be helpful. So.
But it also been in our last project to get Effie Jones to run the project, the CM. Part of the project was bid traditional, part of the project was co-op bid, was based on what items needed to be done. A lot of that project was also happening during the pandemic. And what you could get done, what you could get access to in terms of mechanical systems and things of that nature. So there's a, I think there's a nuance to what you use it for, how much you use it, and if it's feasible. But I think the current lawsuit, it's happening right now, it tells us, let's ultimately have it feasible to use it on a board high.
Do you think that in terms of the type, we've taken care of the business issue, just improved the CM?
Yeah, we don't need to do anything right now. We're just going to have to make a decision sooner or later. If we're going to run a traditional bid, then we need to put all the little bids back together with the architects and engineers and construction management teams, so.
I think it's also important to know that these two special projects overlap.
Yes, right.
So.
It could be good, it could be good and it could be bad. It could be, it could help us in a way that we may end up having, you know, something in the first project or roofing portion that we were going to do. Now we have more roofing to do, oh, it's next project. So you might bid that, you may get someone on site, you may get better pricing for a bid on a larger project than you would on some small separate audit.
I agree with that. I'm just thinking more along the lines of the two building projects overlapping and having the same team who was running the original one. Now, as the second one comes in, it's probably enough.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, right now is the, I mean, the bulk of the stuff that we've been building is going to start this summer, the music suite. Yeah, the pedestals for, are really, you know, was really going to be what was particularly done last summer, then maybe a new mechanical system we got put in, and that's it. Everything else is really, this would be pretty significant, all the, the summer will remodel and the entire gym and the roof and some work on the pool, which we know is going to be challenging in itself in every quarter, but we certainly find something that's an issue. So, yeah, I think the big bulk is coming up. Whoever it is, it'd be nice if you have somebody that's consistent throughout that. If not, you, you know, we do it in phases and we've done that before. The, you do a phase and then you submit right away, so you start generating aid on those projects. So we typically strategically do that to make sure that we're generating aid right away. So we'll try to do a smaller portion of the project, a lesser piece, but submit it and start to give that aid flow happening, which is important to me, I guess.
I'd say, am I ready to embark to meet a half million dollar project? Yeah, go ahead. Great recommendation from Bob and all the staff that have been here, Corey as well. There isn't any evidence to suggest that there's been any, well, however, there's probably a conflict of interest. I think, I say this to your due diligence, you know, I think the past project did that. And, you know, I know that we're going to have a significant surplus at the end of this year, so whatever the cost, I think it's, I think it's what we're doing. And I'd suggest that they do that longer. I've seen independent investigators who weren't necessarily independent. Getting somebody else in the area that might not know, E.T.A.M.C.O., might not know Smith, might not know Oego, I think that'll be a best.
I think you're going, it sounds like you want to do an RFP for, is that a two?
I don't think an RFP is necessary. What's a.
I just kind of heard that, yeah.
And I'm not sure it's not very part of the.
I think we do our due diligence and take a look at any auditors, maybe certain who's in the area.
Okay, so, please. Say that's in, no, it's.
Right.
It's in. I know you can update it. Five years. I've been putting on about five years.
I guess the, I mean, we need a mechanism to be able to attract your groups. I think we can just go out and call people and search these architects or something.
We've got to give them scope or.
Right. That's what I'm saying, maybe an RFP is the best. If you have a particular scope, you want them to examine. But I think that the other piece too with Julie is just so, I mean, she is examining it right now. So I want to warn her sometimes, because I'm not sure. If you want her to continue to do that work, that's fine too, but she's didn't think of it, because I know that, basically, she's. Actually, for decades, asking questions.
I don't know the rest of it. So our independent auditor, and this is what they are, they're independent auditors. Somebody else.
Yeah, I don't think most, most is independent auditor.
No, no, that's, no, no, the, and she's, she's internal banking auditor. Our annual auditors are independent, and as Bob said, they're out of it. But we had somebody before them, I mean, these guys were the last star. So, I mean, but by definition, they're independent auditors. They don't work for us. They're their own company. Not that Julie does, she wrote the policy, but I, you know, you could.
They're dealing with our external stuff.
And then I think you might be clear of the RFP, Corey, because they've already won. They've already won the district.
All right, that's what I'm saying, I think that that's whatever you want.
I don't know how they're going to react, is what I'm saying, because they won the RFP for our independent.
That's fair enough.
So if we go to somebody else, they might be a little annoyed. I don't know.
Well, they might. The other piece too is they could send you someone that, I guess we don't predict the work with them.
Yeah, they can do that.
Sure they have a lot of people.
Well, they have people that are specially trained in capital projects. They're a pretty big firm, as I. So you've got lots of experience there, and they're, of course, they're in, right now, they're giving taxes, but I don't imagine people that are specialists in capital projects are doing that. Nor are they, you don't take them off the body, either?
Yeah.
I'm used to it, again.
It's all, it's all good discussion. I would have a suggestion that we clearly have some questions about how to go about it. Is it a RFP? Is there a resolution? Is there a limit of how much we want to spend on this to put together? So maybe, maybe we look into it.
And I could just get feedback from your attorney.
I don't, that's right.
On what, any suggestions or even write the RFP for them.
I'd say we want to win it, but I don't know what an average cost is for a service like that. It's hard to say what's the limit of that.
Yeah.
It will be able to get unless you get the scope. Yeah, it's hard to.
John Reck.
I mean, so, do I make a motion that help myself to look into that, or is people on cable looking into that, or, I don't know.
I don't, that's, that's his rules. I think the five audities.
I thought it was on a budget finance committee, I thought they.
The audit committee is.
I thought they may be serving the powers.
The audit committee is the whole board.
Well, I think this is the board's job, to be honest with you, Gene. I think, I think, I think the board's, I think the board came up with this. The board has found this out, and I think the board is the only one, certain members of the board are the only ones that seem to be terribly concerned about it. So I think we need to keep it in the board's hands.
No, thanks, Bob. That's perfectly fine by me.
Right, okay, so that's what I think, right, so I, I think, I think we, I think we could look into it, find out how to go about acquiring it, how much it will cost. Do we need to do an RFP? Do we need to do a resolution? I think we did the best thing for the project, get the CM pool, and we'll slow it down. We don't know the result of the lawsuit that made that one yet. I didn't, I didn't the lawsuit yet. And so we don't know where that is, and when we, when that is finished, we'll know more about it. So we have time, is what I'm saying, we have a window.
Let me just, are we, are we staying, that we've brought, we've got this, and so we pull the trigger, we can go start doing what we need to do to get ready for the summer? Or are we holding up until the side is the? Or are we holding up until decided is the, oh, we need to?
Yeah, I just want some clarification because of the project at hand. I think why the superintendent is pushing towards bidding is because that is, from a competitive standpoint, the question at hand, I think, as far as this audit, and it's, to me, if the board is giving some direction here on that, I, I need to know that because we're getting close, dangerously close to a time here where if we don't get the bid specs out, put a bid together, we're gonna be struggling to make summer construction. So I don't want that to happen, because then we have the gym that has to be done, want it done by the end, by the time school starts. You got the music suite, same case. Really tight windows to get that stuff done.
District doing the project. Everybody's gonna be around the same time or something.
That's why he's recommending, I would agree with him to recommend that we just go out to bid on that portion of the project. We're not looking to go any sort of cooperative bid at all.
But I, I hope that decision's being made regardless of the audit. Audit should be completely separate. If going forward, if that's the way, in your opinion, is to do the cooperative bidding.
My opinion.
Well, that, that might be it.
No lawsuit.
I might say that it is cost effective to go cooperative.
We'll stay to this.
And that's the problem.
So I, the silence.
Just wanna make sure that we're transparent about that, because.
The audit shouldn't have anything to do with that decision.
Okay, so, is the board saying that you're allowing us, or at least to make that decision based on what we see projected cost to be? That the cooperative bid might, I'm making up, making it up. It's a million. If we go to bid, it could be a million and a half. Eight hundred. Just for the sake of numbers, to understand the argument. So are you saying that if we decided to go cooperative bid, you're okay with that?
No, because I don't expect the auditors to find that in their affairs.
I, you're right. I agree with you. There shouldn't. So to me, I don't see a problem with a cooperative bid. I see it as cost effective opportunity so that we can get construction done and we can get our kids back into the classroom in a timely fashion and we can move on. That's the way I look at it, strictly that way. So I just wanna make sure that that's clear. Is there any questions about that? Is it not clear to everybody what we're talking about? Because I need to know just for directions, so I, I know to move forward.
I'll say again, from a legal standpoint, if there's gonna be an appeal, I don't think we wanna be in the middle of being part of that. I can almost guarantee there will be an appeal, whatever decision is either way. But we don't have time to wait and think about whether we're gonna decide to co-op or we're gonna decide to bid based on that lawsuit. As soon as we co-op and if something does happen with that lawsuit, we're getting the papers the next day.
That's right.
Just something to keep in mind.
You can't go wrong if you bid it yourself.
No.
If this weren't going on right now, I would tell you that, yeah, let's look at both and see what's the best scenario.
I shouldn't say you can't go wrong. You might wind up in, but you won't be involved. Is that, if that happens?
We can't have another delay. We can't have another delay.
Right. Yep. And every time we delay, it's gonna cost more money.
I, I agree with Cory. And, and, you know, I don't, I don't see how, a cooperative bid has, has nothing to do with any conflict of interest anyway. But it does have, if like this, if this litigation goes the wrong way and then we get served with papers because we used the cooperative bid, then we're dead in the water. And so what good is that? You might just well, well, you can always reduce the bids.
That's true.
They come in at fifty percent, I guarantee you reject them.
I think the other piece that Cameron has spoken to me about is that, sure that when you complete your contract, he can make changes in the contract to address any of these things where they would have to inform you of potential conflicts. And explain potential conflicts. So that can go right in the contract, in any one of our contracts moving forward, which is the most, I think he's aware of that, he's currently drafting that language. So.
That's the safest way. Joe, wanna interrupt this?
I didn't anticipate that. I thought the approval of this C M would facilitate whatever direction we go, whatever best. We have to have a decision by the board to either go cooperative bid or not.
We, I mean, we'll, usually we would just analyze both and see what, what makes the most sense initially, efficiency wise. But right now, I'd be awful hesitant to. This would not help me with that, it's gonna play out.
So I would make a motion to have Joe look up into the independent auditor that was in Cero, if I hadn't talked to Cameron. Take a look at, come up with a resolution.
Well, not holding up.
Yeah.
Any construction prospect.
Yeah, that's.
Right, right.
Opposed.
That discussion, more discussion. Question?
Jean.
Aye.
Linda.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Okay, discussion item Marathon Health.
Yeah, so Cameron's gone through the, the contract and I think this, he worked with the same period that he did with the, so they really essentially had the same, same adjustments and changes within the contract, suggestions, whatever, called up. So that is in place. We're still in a little bit of limbo waiting on what, what coser is specifically gonna be available and then what items, what items are we gonna be able to run through that coser that we can reach at all. If we look at just some primary ones with what we've kind of heard, again, this is all very hypothetical. We won't know until we actually get, you know, get that final exposure information. I would say we're looking at in the ballpark between administrative costs and some of the upfront, wazey construction that's gonna take place, which should come things like that. And I believe they talked about maybe the least piece being part of that. I would say probably conservatively, we'd be in the one twenty to one fifty, one forty thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand dollar range of generating aid coming back to us some way.
And what are the year?
I, I'd say we're probably, I think it's probably annual, yeah. So I think over, over the five years, so if you take, say you call it, say you can go conservative, call a hundred over the five years, that number of, I think the last number we received was one point two. So now you're down, take five hundred thousand dollars off of that, because we would receive that back in aid on the access, for the total.
I was thinking that the total savings would be probably two or five years, so add that number to that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yes, yes, yes. I, I, for some reason, I feel like we'll just look at it earlier. It was one point, I have to go back and pull up just because it's. But there is, there's some opportunity there, but again, we can't really say specifically. But it definitely makes the numbers better than what we, you know, we initially have been presented. And, you know, obviously, I'll say these other group will certainly grow as much as they're.
I think the health insurance is. We, moving to the H S A can save a lot of money for the district as well as individuals, but now it's reset. So now everything's insurance is gonna go back up eight, nine percent in a single year. And so the only way the district is gonna get the same money is either to ask for higher contributions from employees, look at other plans, or get better at consumerism, which this is, this is still mine. And I think, I think this would be an opportunity. No, I think, using the old numbers, without the BOCs aid, I think there's, we're gonna at least fourteen and a half years of potential saving of a million dollars with the BOCs aid.
Yeah, I think one of the, that would have consumers, I mean, that was one of the primary reasons we, I'm this way initially, was that if you're trying to build that coser and so, take a little more initiative for that. In our previous model of plans that were used, that really wasn't, didn't exist, so that a cost control was really, I'm just, but, you know, obviously experience rates are the biggest thing that's gonna drive any health insurance over there. You know, for the, you know, bump up or down. You know, this year we saw a increase in, in U Vanna with the retirement insurance. So that was a pretty significant bump up. But our regular employee insurance, not too bad to say fairly flat. So it's a, it's a managing game and it, and that's the other piece too, that savings, you know, if you can build your reserve and you have that when you do see high experience rates and you can, it's kind of that reserve is for, you can supplement some of that here and there, if you can build a healthy enough reserve there, to be able to keep it, keep it even flow for staff, so that they're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna see these huge increases. Oh, by the way, it's ten percent more this year. You're gonna pay ten percent more on your check. Your raise that you're gonna get is, which we try to avoid and work hard on that. Again, it's consumer, it's education, it's consumerism, different, different thought process mindset. I can tell you that the people at the state level are extremely excited and interested to see how this model is, if we do decide to, because they know that's such a huge, huge cost factor for districts across the state.
Do we use some of the health insurance that is for startup costs?
We could. No, we have, I mean, I would say, we have a health amount there, we can help.
Help.
Yeah.
So who, who should, or is there any plan? I mean, we need, we need to discuss our, bring up what our needs and our expectations are.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to, once we get the finalized coser information, it 'll get a little bit harder numbers, I think that we can get a meeting of some kind together and.
Some financial considerations that there's, and put the people out on that. So we have to, we have to present that to Mayor, to create a, yeah, what we're looking for.
If it's gonna be something different than what they initially proposed. That's something too, that I, I, I don't like and work for Jeff Jason, most negotiating with them, so.
So they said, I don't think.
I don't think that nothing's finalized in terms of, of the contract, but if we are, we've been going based on what they initially gave us, the initial proposal.
That's a position to system.
So as soon as we have a little bit more solid numbers from that coser, if those two, again, those are difficult, you can grow, I feel like is the best. And who knows? Maybe it'll get better if they decide to throw some other things in the, in there to allow them to be capable.
And maybe different attitudes.
Yes. One of the things too, I don't think we've really talked about much, but this was in the initial conversation with Marathon, with us being the two founding districts to participate. Other districts or other outside organizations, say the county, for example, maybe is interested in participating, we benefit from having the foundational people in the model. So we would see even more savings if someone else down the road did participate.
If you join now, we ask you.
Yeah, yes.
I skipped right over public comments. I realize the two people here are not interested in commenting, but you want to have anything to say or comment today? Thoughts?
Well, just curious, because how it says, it's limited, just what's current meeting. I had a question about graduation and I don't think that gets in here. Wasn't agenda.
Would you, you have a question about the graduation?
I do, yes.
Yeah, yeah. You wanna use that as your public comment?
I would just, I just look for common questions, whatever. I got a little bit of concern. Just recently saw that the time's been changed to two o'clock in the afternoon on that Friday. And that means that I have to get out of work, there's potential that I cannot. So I'm gonna be private and watch my child walk across the stage.
I think the challenge is, challenges the Strawberry Fest this year. It's a unique.
Sure.
Unique situation. And I'll tell you, other districts too, and I'll get more about it, is their graduation identified. So, you know, I certainly, certainly have a thought, yeah, take it more than that, it's definitely, definitely creates an issue. Really just because of this specific timeframe for the Strawberry Fest is, that's why that decision was being tried to draw up to.
Sure.
Two o'clock, based on amount of traffic and people being able to get in and out in, in certain areas.
But rather than go to, say, Sunday, when there is no, the Strawberry Fest is in there and people are off, let's not push the mood today. I'll work that.
I don't know why, I don't, I don't know that Sunday has been a day.
I'm trying to think what the, the, and that was your conversation, what we've been changing. Strawberry Fest wasn't, was it? There was a little discussion.
Yeah, we had, that's it, because there was that big break between school and then we didn't, we had to move it, but I don't, I don't, I personally didn't think of, didn't take Strawberry Fest, it might be.
The original change was about the gap. I didn't factor it.
Does it, so, did you consider moving it Sunday?
I mean, you could, I guess, but I know that Phil has sent communication out to Dan, so it's a big, big deal about people. I'm not saying that it could.
Yeah. Well, this is, we certainly discussed it.
I just bring up the concern, I know it's.
Absolutely. Something we should consider. See, probably if you look at, if you look at those, that weekend, I think the original, the original concept of changing date, it didn't have anything to do with the Strawberry Festival. It was such a lull between the last region's exam and, so the intent was strictly that. So I can't guarantee anything, but I can tell you, we can discuss it.
Right. No, I understand. I, I'm familiar with the regions, program, how it works and all, and, you know, I understand that. I just, you know, kind of bind to that. Some change to move the story.
Your district.
Yep.
Joe, can I just point out a minute?
Yes.
I volunteer for a dance development for a school and I've been volunteering for fourteen years to three different districts. And this is the best school I've ever been in, seriously. I mean, the teachers, the teachers care. The kids say seventy-three percent. I don't know where they get that, because I've seen teachers that have hit, and hit the child, and put them on the lap and say, come on, so we need to come back. So I, I think it's amazing school. And I think it's one of the best of course.
Very happy that you shared that, sort of what Mr. Beatty here, Dr. Green is here and the board.
Don't let that go to his head.
Oh, he doesn't pay any attention to anything. But I would say, with those, we get comments in the Penny Saver about teachers being overpaid, anybody that makes those comments needs to come in and sit for an entire week with the little guy who's the first weeker here. I'll tell you why. They're not overpaid. They are not overpaid.
Do you know Joan Davis?
I, I know.
She writes for the Courier, and I think we just gave her a very good story.
I'm coming, you did, so Debbie said, you know.
Story I expect to be in the paper this week, but thank you very much, thank you for sharing, great God bless for being here, love you.
Sir, can I get your name through the next?
Sure, Brian Steele.
Thank you.
Well.
So, quick question, the original time and day.
After, we have to work, sure, but I understand the conflict with strawberry fests, I mean, it's all understandable, we just bulked it back. I, you know, I'm a teacher. And I've got a limited number of personal days I can use, someone borrowed it accountable by taking my daughter to college things. And then also, once you start timing, it's a Friday, and it kind of comes down to, there's limited subs, they limit how many people can take a personal day. So the potential is that I wouldn't be able to get a day off, which is really kind of disappointing that I couldn't sit next to you guys and watch your kids grab, walk across the stage with my.
Make sure we know when we're discussing it.
Sir. Yeah.
Anybody else? Need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, please, Matt.
Sorry.
We're all okay with March third moving to February twenty-fourth, and we got two responses back.
Moving to February twenty-fourth, from March third, oh, to February. I thought it was this was my, I can tell, okay.
Mark, um, did we get a confirmation too, on the budget workshop?
No, that was my next question.
Okay, all right.
And budget workshop on the nineteenth. That was all the same, that was all the same email, Joe responded.
I think it's, I.
Did it say?
Who responded? I did.
Yes, they responded, I, all they responded to was conflict, really, okay, that's what I can forget. Who wrote that?
So, so they're basically saying that it's, so.
Okay, so the next.
So they're all gonna be in it.
Yes, February twenty-fourth. District office, yeah, all right, I'll look again, sorry.
Uh, maybe one?
Yes, please.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So. All in favor?